Is that fundamental to the task force's work and embedded in every one of the recommendations is a commitment to continue to ensure access, to pursue equity and student success with even greater vigor than existed before. That the system has been tremendously successful on the access side, but I believe, and I think all of you believe, that there are ways that we can do better in terms of student success. And that is what this report attempts to address and to provide, if you will, steps along the way for that success, for those student successes to increase. I know there is a lot of concern within the system that how do you move ahead on a program such as this without a ton of money behind it? And the reality is, known by you as well as it's known by me, that there is not going to be a lot of money that's going to be behind it, but we cannot afford the wait. We operate every day. We'll do as much as we can within the resources that we have available while having an extremely strong commitment to go after the level of support that we believe the colleges need and frankly have lost substantially over the last four years. So the status quo basically is not acceptable. And we have to improve on ensuring that those students who come to us with a sense of hope, a sense of aspiration, that more and more of them are completing associate degrees, certificates, or transferring to universities. So let's take a look at our slides. And Paul, how do these slides advance? That's one thing I should have known before I came up here, but did not. Okay. Are you going to be the advanced man, Paul?
Yes.
You'll be the advanced man. Okay. Again, what we are doing, it's really important to consider what is happening in California within the context of what is happening in the United States and in the state of California and what the needs are in the United States and the needs in California. President Obama has made it clear that he has a goal of re-establishing America as the most educated country in the world. And that means in terms of degree completion. And that between '08 and '18, that 10-year period, we are expecting that occupations that require an associate degree will grow the fastest of any occupations requiring graduate degrees, baccalaureate degrees, or whatever. So there is a great need for those individuals who complete the degrees in the California Community College. And very substantially, if we do not experience more success than we have, by 2025, California's workforce will face a shortage of 1 million. So community colleges nationwide are being asked to respond, and we need to respond specifically for the state of California. California Community Colleges, as all of you know, and all of us can take great pride in, has been a quintessential open access college system, a model as far as I'm concerned for the United States and for the world in terms of how access should be provided. But sometimes it's easy to lose sight of just how significant that access is. 112 colleges, 72 districts, 2.6 million students, serving the most diversified population in America. And everyone sitting out there, I think, should feel a sense of pride at being a part of that. As we look at the impact that the colleges have had in responding to the vocational, technical needs in the state, 70% of our nurses, 80% of our firefighters, law enforcement personnel, EMTs, trained in the community colleges, 25% of the University of California graduates, and over one-half, 55% of CSU graduates, began their journey in higher education through the California Community Colleges. Workforce impact, those students who weren't in the associate degree or a certificate nearly doubled their earnings within three years. It's good, strong data to support that conclusion. And associate degree holders earn 33% more than those with a high school degree. And the unemployment rate is 30% lower. So what does this mean? It means that the work that we're doing will have a profound effect, not only on individuals, the true individual gains, as you can see, but also on responding to the needs that exist within California and within the nation. Some of the challenges, last 15 years enrollment has grown 44%. Unfortunately, we have not seen a concomitant increase of funding, but that's the reality. We'd like it to be different, but it is not. Substantially reduced resources, 47% of our students report they cannot enroll in needed classes compared to 28% nationwide. So in some rather substantial way, our colleges are less hospitable in matching the academic course selections that students want and those courses that are available to them. And then, of course, our completion rates of the 18%, 18% of the total population who begin one level below transfer. And I know those of you out there know that there are many who are more than one level below transfer, the two, three, in some cases, four levels. Only 42% of the 18% who are only one level below ever achieve a certificate, degree, or transfer. So as a result of that, the legislature, as they will, looking at the data, what's happening in community colleges, presented Senate Bill 1143, the Lou Bill, and basically established this task force. And our goal as a task force has been to examine the best practices, the best practices that exist throughout the nation. And we have tried to do this by bringing in people from all over, from the East, from the Southwest, and from the Northwest. Talk with them, understand it. None of us have gone into this with the sense that we have the answer. There's been an exploratory process. I think there's been a great sense of openness, tremendous dialogue because of the diversity of the task force members. And that is how the 22 recommendations have evolved, both from expert testimony, a great deal of reading, and substantial discussion among the 20 task force members. The timeline Manuel went through earlier, let me just say that the major responsibility we will have will be to submit a report for the Board of Governors in January. The Board of Governors will take action on behalf of the system. They will either adopt the report, or they will adopt the report, I hope. We're not looking at any alternatives to that. We're hoping that... We have attempted to have ongoing dialogue, of course, with the board as we proceeded through this. And I think that there's a great deal of support for what is taking place. The report will be submitted to the legislature, not for approval, but for information. This is a report for the system, by the system, to the system, for the system to take action. And that's our time now. Now the recommendations. I think what is critical, just to kind of keep a perspective, is it is very important not to consider any one recommendation in isolation. These recommendations, it's like the old statement of a Gestalt, the sum is greater, the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. And that's true about this. With a single recommendations, 22 come together, and that whole is much greater than you can identify through any one of them. So let's take a look at an overview, first refocusing the college towards student success. And obviously, that involves rebalancing priorities, making the colleges more responsive to both the needs of students and the economy, and increase the success rates predominantly in the measures, the metrics, certificate, degree completions, and transfer. Those are the primary measures that we will be looking at because they address what the needs of the state are and the system. I would like now to ask fellow task force member Marlene Garcia to come forward. Marlene is the Vice Chancellor for Legislative Affairs, and to give you some sense of how hard the people in the chancellor's office work for you, that injury you sustained and working on behalf of community colleges with the legislature.
And I'm going to add, you should see what the other guy looked like. That's a much better story than what actually happened. I tripped. Well, thank you so much for being here. And what I'm going to do is walk through at the 100,000-foot level to give you, you know, point out the high points of what we think are the most significant components of this very robust set of recommendations. And I am just really taken by your interest and commitment to these issues because we all know, I have never met a person working in the community colleges, attending the community colleges, who isn't absolutely devoted to community colleges and the community college students we serve. So we're here as a family, and I thank you for your commitment and devotion to helping students. So let's start with the recommendation overview. I do want to just touch on the last slide, and you don't have to go back to the last slide, but I just want to point out, that was the one that said, you know, this whole effort is really about, for the first time, having to reprioritize. We really pride ourselves of being everything to everyone who comes to our doorsteps, and we've been trying diligently to do that for years. The state, obviously, and not just this past few years, it's been, you know, decades that has not invested in what it is we're supposed to be doing. So we've had to, this set of recommendations reflects, you know, having to prioritize and really say, what is going to be our core mission? And that's been a very hard process to go through, and it's something that we're talking about now, and we're trying to understand what the implications are, but that's a big part of this. The second part of that process was also, you know, being focused and honest about the success strategy. And who is it that is not succeeding? Who is it who's succeeding? We have tremendous success of students who come to the community colleges, 2/3 of the community colleges who transfer from UC and CSU are successful community colleges. So we are building on a whole commitment and history of success. So now, we're zeroing in on those segments of the population who unfortunately have not been as successful. And we're talking about, by and large, the students who are in that basic skills realm. And those are the students that probably reflect the diversity of this state more than anyone else. Those are the students who come to the community colleges as a chance to get out into the workforce. Those are primarily students of color, Latinos and African Americans. And that is what's at the core of this set of recommendations. And I think we've already heard loud and clear that that's implicit throughout the recommendations. I think we need to acknowledge, this needs to be more explicit. And we're hearing a lot of the comments, and that's why you being here today is so important, because we want to hear what your perspective is and how we can make this an even stronger set of recommendations. So with that, let me walk through recommendation number one. There's a series, you know, you've seen the different chapters, and under number one, there's a series of different recommendations. Recommendation one is basic. It's, we need to be coordinated and aligned with our K-12 partners. If the majority of, 70% of the students who come to us are underprepared, even if they pass the proficiency test, there must be a disconnect. We just need to engage in that conversation with them. They're in the process of developing a new common course standard assessment. We need to be part of that discussion so that we can give input and ensure that, in fact, they are preparing students to be college and career ready. So that's a conversation that will definitely take place, and it'll be a priority. Doesn't involve resources, just involves a focused relationship. The second recommendation, strengthen support, I guess we should go to the slides. Let's just go to strengthen support for entering students. See, the next one was sliding. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. So recommend, the second chapter, this is critical. This is one of those sets of recommendations that are the linchpin to the entire package. This is something that, yes, this would require a common assessment, a centralized diagnostic tool that the colleges would make available. And that's something that many of, we're already in the process of developing by virtue of the governor signing AB 743. That's one step in the right direction, moving us toward one assessment that students can use. Over time, the assessment will be customized and become more diagnostic, which is really the key. But for now, the first step is, let's all get on the same page with the assessment. It's better for students, particularly the students that are having to go to multiple colleges to get a full load. So this has become really important. The second issue requires students to participate in orientation, completion of education plans, and to take those diagnostic assessments. We're, for the first time, we're not saying if funding's available, we're saying, we have to do this. This is core to any success plan, particularly for those students who are most vulnerable. We have the benefit of watching the amazing work that EOPS, Mesa, Buente Projects have been doing for decades. What's at the core of their success strategy? Education plans, orientation, and of course, counseling, and assessments. And there are a lot more things than that. And we know, the challenge has been, how do we get the state to invest in scaling that to everyone? Because practically, probably 70% of our students should be in EOPS, but the state has not funded that. So we can continue just saying to the state, you've got to fund it, you've got to fund it. Or we can say, let's take the elements of those programs that we know work, they're incubators of best practice, particularly for those most struggling students. Let's take those elements and scale those. And let's make the funding available to scale those elements. Education plan, orientation, diagnostic assessment. We wish we could do all, but let's start there. We know that works, and we know that from our own programs, our own experience and best practice. So that's a key linchpin. And then, the touch, the daily counselor-student touch. We know how critical that is. That's been a cornerstone of these very successful programs. But we can't right now go to the legislature and say, give us the funding, we need 90-to-1 ratio students when we're close to 2,000-to-1. So what we need to do is do what the medical industry, we might have to triage for a little while. Not all students need the high touch. Anyone can benefit from the high-touch counseling, faculty counseling, anyone can benefit. But right now, we have that as our primary source of counseling. So either you're lucky to get the counseling session, or you get nothing. We don't think you can get nothing anymore. We have to figure out how to make those education plans, how to make that counseling available through various modes of delivery. So there is the technology piece. We have a very technological savvy group of students coming in. Not all students are technologically savvy. If they're my age, they're probably not. But certainly, a good number and a growing number of students are. So we have to utilize the technology to navigate their education plan, to do degree audits, very similar to what UC and CSU do, so that they can press and figure out, okay, I need this class, I need that class. Don't waste the counselors' time doing something you can get online. The counselors are reserved for the more complex issues. And even then, we're not going to have enough counselors. But at least we can go to them and say, look what we did. We did low touch, maybe we can do some medium touch with advisors, and then high touch for counselors. And then we go back to the legislature and say, invest, this is key. But we have to show that we're doing everything we can right now. We're not going to wait for the economy to turn around. We're doing what we can right now. And that's the message we need to deliver to Sacramento and say, you've got to invest in us. Look at what we're doing. We're amazing. And that's, you know, we have to get them to believe that about us. They do, actually. Okay, the next slide, three. This is recommendations, chapter three. This is a really key area, and this is a tough one, because we're very much in a egalitarian type system. We're there for everyone, and we have been. And that's what's made us unique. But this involves setting some priorities and incentivizing the kind of behavior that all the research shows, all our EOPS programs show, that there's certain behaviors that bring success. And so for the, so what we're, what we're trying to do is make some priorities so that students have something to work towards. So enrollment priority, you know, right now, our enrollments are returning students, and that's a very large category of students. It could be the student who's been, you know, taking, you know, hobbyist students is, you know, included. There isn't, we have not teased out the various kinds of returning students. So what we're saying is, right now, enrollment priority is key. And by the way, all the statutory enrollment and regulatory enrollment priorities remain the same. So this will not affect veterans, it will not attack foster youth, which was just established in law. This will not affect EOPS or the disabled and disadvantaged students. They will all continue to have the enrollment priority that they have, either in statute or regulation. But what this does say, it sets some conditions. Returning students who have an education plan, back to the linchpin, who have taken their assessment of their education plan and have had the orientation, you get first enrollment priority. After that, you get first-time freshmen who've done the diagnostic, who've done the orientation, the education plan, you get next priority. So on and on, and you have that in the report, but it starts to say, certain practices will move you higher up in the queue. It doesn't say you can't have access, but if you don't have an education plan and you are taking French to go on your French vacation in the summer, if there's access, you can go. But if there's not access, you're the one who shouldn't have first bite at the apple. Those first-time freshmen, 130,000 of them that got, who didn't get access to one class last year, because they weren't the highest priority, we can't do that. So that's what this is about. The other piece of this incentivizing practices that lead to greater success is the BOG fee waiver set of issues. And I know, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about that, mainly trying to really understand that. But we're saying, you know, BOG fee waiver, to get a Cal Grant and a Pell Grant, you have to meet certain academic progress. We don't have that with a BOG waiver. We don't, actually, you can get the BOG waiver as long as you go to a community college. Well, at a time when we have such scarce resources, we have to say, look, we know you've been here for 110 units, and if you haven't met your educational objective, we're doing something wrong. We're not giving you guidance, you're not getting that counselor you need. So we need to take responsibility for that, too. But if, that's where the whole package comes into play, if you do the orientation, if you do the, if you do the ed plan, if you do the, you take advantage of the support services, it shouldn't take you 110 units to get what you need from the community colleges. And that's the real message. This is not about rationing money or saving money on BOG fee waiver backs. That's not what this is about. This is about, hopefully, we don't have students who have to take 110 units to get their certificate or transfer. Hopefully, they do it at 60 units when you're supposed to, or, you know, 70, 80 units if you had a lot of basic skills work to do. So that's what that's about. The other conditions they'd have to meet is satisfactory academic progress, and they have to do the education plan and, you know, have the ed plan. So those are the conditions. They're conditions that are not to be mean and filter or ration. They're conditions that, if you do those things, you're more likely to succeed. That's the rationale behind this. And it's a tough one for us, because we've not done that. We've not said, we need to be committed to certain practices, and you need to follow certain steps to ensure your success. Now, the next set of slides, I believe Dr. McDougal is going to cover, and talk about basic skills, probably the core of the challenge and the opportunity that we'll be facing.
Did you highlight this one, Marlene, about aligning cost savings?
I guess, I guess, okay.
No.
Do you want me to do that one?
Well, I can, I'll just try to handle it quickly. But the idea there is, particularly in an environment where we are having to ration access to courses by reducing courses because of budget cuts, we have to ensure that the supply, the most fundamental supply for basic skills for career and technical and transfer programs, that those remain available. And right now, there's an imbalance in those, and the system must put more of those available. And with limited resources, we need to put as many of those resources behind them as possible. Next area is, was, oh, okay. Basic skills. There's probably, I'm sure, all of you in the audience know how we, as colleges, have worked so very hard in this area of basic skills. And my experience is that we have some of the most committed, the finest, some of the finest teachers who are employed in those areas and put their heart and soul into their work. But again, we, the facts speak for themselves in terms of the numbers that are able to get through the sequences and roll in college-level courses. And I think what we have learned, there are ways of looking at this, there are ways of approaching it, that might help to have more come through at the end and to have that timeline be reduced for that happening. One of the, one of the most difficult things is that students often get discouraged because of how long it takes them to progress through the sequence. And the assumption here, at least one of the assumptions, is that by doing a better job on the front end diagnostically, we can more effectively pinpoint what the gap might be. And rather than taking a full semester course, it might be that a sequence of 10-week course or a couple 10-week courses will provide the background and enable the individual to go into the next level. There's a lot of excellent experimentation that is already occurring among the colleges. And it's a matter of sharing that, it's a matter of highlighting what is working and looking not only here in California, but other places as well. Because that's, we're a tremendous stumbling block. And the K-12, as was mentioned earlier, this, right now, I don't think we will have a better opportunity as a system to work with K-12 than we have at the present time. And the reason I say that is because they are in the process of developing outcomes that pertain to having students be career and college-ready. And that's a federal demand, and the K-12 system will be working on that. We have to work hand and glove with them. And our hope is, obviously, that we will have students coming in, not 79, 70 to 90% that are not prepared, but more, maybe 30, 40% that are not prepared. But those are, those are a couple of thoughts on basic skills. Obviously, the, a critical area for us. Professional development, I think, again, goes without saying, we represent learning institutions, we should be a model as an organization of our ongoing learning. I don't think there's any one that's sitting out there that feels the end of your professional development has occurred. There's more you can learn, there's ways that you can improve, and that has to be supported as much as possible, that as new ideas are put out, new attempts are made to achieve, the faculty, the staff of the institution need to be supported in terms of professional development. And the report speaks of some means for doing that. Efficient statewide leadership and increased coordination, and I know that sometimes can cause a bit of concern. I don't think it has to cause concern at all. I think that the system can, I think, increase substantially its effectiveness and efficiencies by having a strong chancellor's office and having as much collaboration among colleges and between the chancellor's office and our colleges as can be developed. And the idea is to bring the focus, bring support, and to bring collaboration to the forefront, and that a stronger chancellor's office is absolutely essential in that being accomplished. And frankly, from my perspective, it's essential for these goals to be achieved and for us to be more successful as a system. And then finally, we talked about this a bit, aligning resources with the task force's recommendation. And I know this causes a lot of concern, but right, what happens is, programs evolve. Somebody has a great idea, we should have a program. Right now, we have 21 categorical programs within the California Community Colleges. Speaking as a college president, just managing those programs, making sure they are managed well, making sure they're coordinated, can be... making sure they're coordinated, uh, can be a tremendous task and it's not always the most efficient way of providing. So the task force says we should have ways that we look at student support, faculty support, and workforce development as three major categories. Individual institutions will make the decision about whether programs collapsing occurs. That'll be a college-based decision. Again, it will be determined by how can the best outcomes be produced, how can the most efficiencies be developed. So, uh, we have gone through this report, I know, very rapidly. I, I think the assumption among all of us is that you have had some opportunity to go through it on your own. And we just tried, uh, in terms of this morning's presentation, uh, to highlight what we think are some of the critical areas in the report. Now, how can you help in this process? I think you can help in this process by reflecting and maybe sharing with us a view and, and the reasons for that view. Is taken as a whole, will this plan help to achieve its goals? Uh, what are the strengths of the recommendations? What are the potential weaknesses as it pertains or challenges? And are there revisions that you would suggest? And, uh, what will be, from your perspective, the greatest challenges for implementation? Now, that's not intended to restrict your questions or comments or anything else, but it is intended to give you a sense of what would be helpful to the task force. As was mentioned earlier, there'll be four public presentations such as this. This is a public presentation. There will be another one in, in the Central Valley, there'll be one in, uh, Northern California, there'll be one in, in the San Diego region. And then there'll be a number of presentations at faculty and, and, uh, other conferences throughout the state, uh, through the month of November. So now is, uh, the opportunity to respond to your questions.
Sure. And by the way, if you still have questions, you can give them to either Stephanie or Paul or me. Um, and what we'll try to do, because they're, you know, the, the purpose is to hear your questions and to answer them. And, uh, so let's start with the person who arrived first this morning. That is Christine Fertel, and she has a question.
I'm the guinea pig on the microphone. Uh, it's not so much as a question as a public comment. My name's Christine Fertel and I'm an ESL faculty member as well as the dispute resolution chair for CFT Local 2279. And I'm here today to speak for my ESL colleagues as well as for many of my labor colleagues when I say that unfortunately, we have not yet bought into, uh, many of the task force recommendations and have some serious concerns about access and equity. Specifically, I'd like to express three concerns about the ESL recommendations within the basic skills recommendations. First, I'd like to say that we in ESL feel that ESL should not be included in those recommendations at all without more research. The research that suggests, uh, many of the recommendations you've made is on remedial reading and math students primarily. ESL students are not reading and math students or remedial students. ESL students are students who have basic skills inside their first language, who are trying to learn a second language, which will become the foundation for their academic success because they can immediately apply that second language they learn. And we don't start as low as what's your name. So, in that way, it's like a foreign language. We have very strong concerns with creating an artificial floor for ESL credit classes to get them through it more quickly. Just a few days ago, I was sitting in my office and my student Ghana came to visit me, very excited, because she said she'd had a wonderful opportunity to sell insurances.
Got to shorten it down just a little. We got a lot of people here today.
Okay, and she basically wanted to let me know she'd taken a two-month course, gotten a certificate and a license, and was ready to take on my house and car insurance if I wanted. But her language level wasn't there. Degrees and certificates mean nothing if students don't have the language level to apply what they've learned. The other concern we have is with finding alternate ways of funding and delivering credit ESL by going to non-credit. Non-credit and credit programs are not the same. A credit program in ESL is like a business where workers are punctual, they're well-prepared, they complete rigorous tasks in productive manners, and if they do it well, they're reviewed positively and they advance. Non-credit has a different purpose altogether. It's more like an open access community forum where the purpose is to acculturate. They can start or stop or come as they please. It's open access. We don't understand how decreasing motivation is going to increase success. We feel these large-scale credit programs already are successful. They have data to suggest that through ARCC and KEI reports. And we feel that they should not have that recommendation. So we'd like to respectfully ask that you reconsider and take ESL out of the Chapter Five recommendations because ESL students have nowhere else to go. UCNCs, you have cut them, adult schools have closed their doors. Where are these immigrants going to get the education they need for their dreams?
Thank you very much, Christine. Now, that, that was a very helpful comment, but in the future, we're not going to be able to accommodate, you know, lengthy comments like that. We'll never get to the stack of questions and in fairness to the group. So if you have comments, jot them down on your, your blue piece of paper. That's what that's for. We want to record everything, but we can't possibly accommodate comments. So let's try to focus on questions. And if you have a comment, keep it very brief, otherwise I'll start giving you the cutoff signal, okay? So next, we have Gisela Spielers-Persad.
You want to hold the mic for me? I need to read this off my trusted little iPad, so I'm not going to go over time. I'm Gisela Spielers-Persad and a math professor and director of the Math Engineering Science Achievement Program, MESA, at Rio Hondo. And I really was riveted reading this report because I think the recommendations you come up with are right on and they will really strengthen our college and support the students who have the goals, as, the, the, as diverse goals as they are. And, uh, because you're recommending practices that we're using in MESA, for example, the educational plan. Without that educational plan, you, uh, you don't know where you're going. However, if you can't get the class, it's useless. And we've worked on fifty thousand dollars a year to build programs and we have been able to leverage millions of dollars as, as a collective because we had that structure. Uh, my question is, to keep that core, uh, short, if you, uh, since MESA is part of the Fund for Student Success, uh, and it really depends on the, the college climate, no, 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 don't turn off. It, uh, depends on the, uh, college climate or politics. Some programs might be folded in and, and, uh, destroyed. And how will you protect, uh, a program that's fostered success for STEM students who are really crucial for California?
Okay, I think that's a really good comment and it's something that's recorded and something that the task force will be addressing. And, okay, so Nori Bahana, um, can you?
Oh, okay, she doesn't want to lose it. I'm Nori Bahana. I'm a Grossmont College, um, family and child and family development instructor who has led the Foster and Kindship Care Education Program for the last twenty-five years. Our question is, why pick that particular one of the categoricals to go in with the others? Because we lose five million dollars in federal funding if we complete this consolidation. And that will then mean that really it's the decimation of that opportunity to do training, education for foster parents in the community who help raise the California children, who are the state of California's abused and neglected children.
Thank you. Um, Dr. McDougal, you want to take that question?
Uh, that's a great comment and, uh, obviously, we would not want to lose a resource of that magnitude. So I think we're going to have to look very, very closely on that. And if any folding were to occur, it seemed to me it would have to take place in a way that enabled those funds to be received or whatever. I don't want to speak for the final outcome, but I really appreciate you bringing that to our attention because that's, in this climate especially, it's not something that we would want to walk away from.
Dr. Pat Hurley.
Thank you. Um, I'm Patty Hurley. I'm the Associate Dean for Financial Aid at Glendale College. And my comment, question addresses the BFAP program, which is slated to be de-obligated. And the BFAP program went in because colleges weren't able or willing to staff financial aid offices. If we lose the money that has allowed us to keep up with almost a hundred percent increase in, um, applications, how did the task force envision that we would fund students and enable them to be successful?
Again, I think, uh, a very, very important question. And, uh, if, if anything, the, the report envisions a continuing strong role for financial aid. Financial aid is critical in supporting the full-time students who are already enrolled, but to increase, what we hope will increase and support greater numbers of full-time students, financial aid becomes even more important. So, uh, I think we'll have to look at that specific issue of BFAP funding. And, uh, I, I, there's clearly no intention, uh, to, uh, take away resources from within that area. And again, the recommendation does not state that. In fact, the recommendation enables potential of more support to be that directed in that way, but with the decision being made on the college level in terms of how the respective funding categories are consolidated or whatever.
Okay. Next speaker, um, question, Dennis Frich.
I'm Dennis Frich, uh, President of the Faculty Association of California Community Colleges. Uh, the question I bring from FAC really centers around faculty, uh, both full-time and part-time. One of the things we recognize, the strengths in, in this, uh, in this report, especially, you know, student ed plans and support services, things like that. But we also are a bit concerned that in achieving those kinds of things, the report doesn't seem to really focus on the crucial role of full-time faculty, especially in student success. And of course, in, in their studies, there's plenty of, of, uh, research to demonstrate. Students who have access to their faculty succeed more often than not, uh, and that. So we're concerned about that. We're also concerned about the clustering of part-time faculty, uh, the three items, uh, in the, uh, part-time faculty support. We don't think that's a particularly good idea either.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and, and, and attempt to answer the, the full-time faculty issue. That is, again, this is what's valuable about the, the feedback process is that implicit in this whole report are, fundamental is, it's key to have full-time faculty, it's key to have adequate number of counselors to do the job. But to start there and the funding implications of saying full-time, we need seventy-five percent of our faculty to be full-time is, is not possible at this point. So I think what we need to do is much more explicitly articulate that full-time faculty are key. We know we can't get the funding for full-time faculty overnight, but we do need to reiterate the support for that. And I think that's an important statement to make as well as to say, we're doing this, understanding that it may be a flat-line budget. It doesn't mean that we're okay with that. We're going to constantly use every opportunity to ask for more resources, full-time faculty, more resources and counseling. So, so I think that your comments are well-taken. That needs to be more explicit in, but that's not the specific, uh, part of the, the proposal at this point because of the funding, that's a huge funding matter. And the second question is related to categoricals.
Uh, just, just briefly on the full-time issue, as you know, a report such as this cannot go across the board. It will lose its impact and focus. And to an extent, we're trying to address those areas that have not been addressed before. And albeit, uh, not fully funded, I think the system and legislature have addressed the importance which all of us embrace of full-time faculty with the seventy-five, twenty-five ratio. The, uh, the difficulty is of the, the, the funding that exists and, and the, and the support of that. But, uh, again, there, there's a need to focus and I think that was, uh, done. And I think as, as far as the categoricals with the clustering with the part-time, I don't want to sound like a broken record, uh, and avoid the question. The question is a good one. And, and part-timers are a critical element and the professional development of part-timers is extremely important. The report does not say taking money away from those areas. The report says that institutions will have the ability within all their forms of, of, of determining through self-governance how best to apply those dollars and to do it. It, it, it doesn't say there will be fewer dollars for that to occur. So my hope would be that the, uh, discussion on the local campus will be vigorous and will result in, in, if you will, support for those areas that are most critical to the institution.
Okay. Next question, Melissa Moser.
Good morning. I want to thank the panel for what an exceptional job you have done so far with the Student Force Task Force here. My concern is with the Board of Governors' fee waiver and the eligibility requirements that you want to put on that. I agree with having an, an eligibility requirement placed on that. However, open consultation needs to be in effect for that so that our students don't have two different criteria to meet for federal and Cal Grant funding and then another standard for the Board of Governors' fee waiver. It's not fair to our students to hinder them with two of these requirements. And frankly, our financial aid offices can't handle another eligibility requirement placed on another program.
Excellent point. And I think the, the, definitely, the, the, we envision having the same eligibility, but that's an important point to reinforce. Okay. Um, next speaker or question, Michelle Secaros.
Hi, everyone. Michelle Secaros, I'm the Executive Director of the Campaign for College Opportunity. And I think, as many of you know, um, we've been strong advocates for trying to expand funding for higher education, but also to highlight the importance of success. We commissioned a report a year ago that noted that, um, following over a quarter of a million California community college students, only three in ten earned a certificate, an AA, or transferred. And for students of color, blacks, it was only twenty-six percent, for Latinos, it was only twenty-two percent. I think all of us would agree that that's unacceptable. And I think this is a courageous approach to finally being very explicit, as you have stated, Marlene, about articulating that success matters as much as access. Because if our students have access, but they're never going to get anything out of it, I'm not sure that we should be applauding that. In particular, I think we appreciate that you have taken, um, as a task force, the things that we know that work. You've shared this earlier, but there are best practices happening at every single community college in California. And yet, we don't scale that to reach every single student. And we're thankful that this is a real opportunity to really scale and be effective at getting students in and through. We strongly support the recommendations. We know that they have to come forward as a package deal and this is really a great opportunity. We need to lobby for more money. We will continue to do that. We're going to be releasing a report in January that highlights the return on investment for California and how ridiculous it is to continue to cut funding for the one area of the state budget that we know gives money back to our state coffers. We will continue to do that, but to say that we can't do more, that we can't change without more money, I think is irresponsible and I think this is a great opportunity to move us in the right direction. We support it and we will mobilize our coalition in support, so thank you.
Just to comment briefly, I, um, I, I obviously appreciate the positive remarks toward it. And if you saw last week, there was a major nationwide report that was produced that indicated, it was in the LA Times, billions in tax dollars lost on dropouts and the focus is the community colleges. And it looks at a five-year block and nearly one billion dollars is quote, "lost," end quote, uh, in the colleges. And basically what that means, it's an investment both in terms of financial aid and investment in state funding where the students do not progress to the completion of a degree, certificate, or transfer. And this, we don't need, we don't need this kind of PR. And very frankly, I was tremendously pleased, and I'm sure the chancellor was, to have available as a response, California community colleges recognize this. The Task Force for Student Success is set up to address it. And we will, hopefully, in five or six years from now, be able to demonstrate figures that are quite different from the figures that are present in this report. But, uh, there's not a lack of awareness of what is occurring. And when we're talking about billions, uh, you, you can't help but feel a bit vulnerable. So we have to be prepared and we have to... So we have to be prepared, and we have to do a better job.
Next question, Jeanette McGee.
Hi, I am here representing not only myself, but the Los Angeles County Community College Cal Works Consortium. Would you guys all please stand? Yes, 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 yes. Thank you very much. And we also have various partners who also not only with us today, but they're also going to be speaking. I was very encouraged today as we, as I listened to your, I'm going to have my back to you, as I listened to your comments, because the Cal Works program, I believe, is a model for many of the things that you were already asking for. Ed plans, orientations, assessments, we already do that. Our students have a limited amount of time that they are able to be in school, so they're very focused. We have partnerships with academic counseling, with the EOPNS, Cal Works, I mean, not Cal Works, but CARE, and the various other programs there on campus. We have an employment arm, and I know that many of us are concerned about what goes on in the employment industry. We provide jobs not only on campus, but outside in business. We also have a variety of services that we do in the community. We have our partners who are going to be speaking as well from the Department of Social Services, and we know that we have support at a state level as well as at a local level as well. So we are appreciative of them and all the efforts that they do. Merging our funds, we all know, jeopardize our funding. We get $26 million at Jeopardy! from the Maintenance of Efforts Fund, $8 million from TANF funds. And then on a local level, we have a $2 million Cal Works local grant that would be at risk if it were merging, because those kinds of things are not allowed for us. Most of our students are the most vulnerable, but in spite of the odds, just what you're looking for. They get the AS degrees, they get the BS degrees, they get graduate degrees, all the various other things. They also transfer at a very high rate. And when we look at how they transfer and the things that they do, we already know that they are most successful and more successful than the average student. So we've got those statistics with us. We brought voters for the committee, and we're hopeful that you have an opportunity to look at them. We also brought not only students with us today, but student testimonials. So we have over 1,200, Marie, if you're going to bring those with them, let's present those right now, 1,200 student testimonials that we brought with us today that talks about not only the success stories, but the efforts that have been put forth and what it might do if this particular program were downsized, cuts, or anything that resembled that. So these are students are the most vulnerable. As you talked about who they are, they are, who are we, I'm sorry, 33% Latino, 19% African-American, 81% female, 67% are over the age of 25 years old, and 84% receive box fee waivers. They are focused. They have been, in spite of the odds, they have been downsized, then right-sized, then cut and reduced. And now, not only that, but the time that they have in school is so reduced. And I'm very passionate about this, so you can see I'm a little nervous. So the amount of time that they can be in school has been reduced. So when they get there, they don't have time to fool around. So when you look at the stats, they probably won't be ours. So we are certainly, if you haven't figured it out yet, opposed to having Cal Works included. Not only would it probably jeopardize our funding, but more importantly, our students. Thank you.
Thank you for that very impassioned comment, and we definitely will take note of that. Okay, our next speaker, Cyretta Diamond.
I stand before you as a student and a Cal Works participant. I attend Los Angeles City College. And a little bit about me, I initially started college in '93. I went to school for two semesters, and I was hired for a record company. And there I stayed 10 years. And the company relocated to a location that I was not able to travel to, which was too far out of the city. I had just gave birth to my second child, and there was no way I could make it. So, um, let me just calm down. So I was faced-
You're doing great.
I was faced with challenges. I took on dead-end jobs that I know that I didn't really want to work, but I had to support my family. So I decided, this is it. I need to go back into college and be retrained and be able to re-enter the workforce with better skills. So in 2009, I decided to go back to college. But I said this, I said that to say that without the Cal Works program, without EOPNS, without financial aid, without the CARE program in our junior colleges, I would not be able to be where I am right now. I held two certificates, a basic legal assistant certificate and a basic administrative office certificate, and I will be graduating with two associates in June of 2012. So I am a product of success in our junior colleges, and with the decrease or the elimination of these programs, it would be absolutely detrimental to not myself, but other families that are trying to become employable and are initially re, initially enter the workforce or re-enter the workforce as I have done. So I just want you to reconsider the recommendation on merging our funds with other funds or even decreasing or even eliminating our funds.
Thank you very much. Now, we've heard, and I'm going to, I work in the legislature, and I'm going to put my legislative hat. The way we do hearings in the legislature, you have, and we've had some absolutely eloquent and authentic speakers on behalf of Cal Works program and the student. So what I'd like to say, if there are others who want to weigh in on Cal Works, just, you know, say your name and make one statement, because I think we hear you and we are committed to the, you're the very example of what we want to support. So if we have other Cal Works comments, let's just try to keep it, just register who you are, and I think we'd give other people a chance to speak as well. So thank you so much. Okay. Our next question is Vicki Hay, Cal Works.
Good morning, still. I heard you, but I'm not going to listen. Instead, I'd like to read a statement. During a time of great recession and extreme unemployment in our state, I wonder if this is the right time to consider shifting the Cal Works program into categorical flexibility. Recently, the County of Sacramento Human Services Director Bruce Wagstaff reported that one in four residents of Sacramento was a recipient of one type of public benefit or another. He also stated that these figures are fast approaching one in three. The United States Census Bureau reported in 2010 that 15.1% of Americans were currently living in poverty. This is the highest amount of people living in poverty in the 52 years for which poverty estimates have been published. Over the last three years, the state of California has slashed the health care and social services budgets collectively by over $15 billion. In July, Cal Works students had their monthly cash aid grant cut by 8%, and the time they are allowed to participate in education training was reduced from five years to four years. Families now have co-pays for physician and hospital visits. SSI/SSD was cut. In-home support services was cut. As a community of educators, do we want to follow suit and further cut or eliminate the services and benefits our community college Cal Works students receive? Is this the message we wish to send our most at-risk students and their children? What do the college Cal Works programs do? Specialized intensive case management, academic personal counseling, workforce development, work-study students, allow students to gain valuable work experience, provides additional desperately needed financial resources for families, and creates jobs in our communities? We offer subsidized childcare. Last summer in 2010, the alternative payment programs in California experienced a deep crisis to their funding due to the state budget impasse. Students were able to continue working or attending classes because they received funds from the campus Cal Works programs. Cal Works programs also fund placements for children in our on-campus development and childcare centers. They are a vital source of revenue for community colleges and one not to be overlooked. The effects on children growing up in poverty is well documented, and in my opinion and the opinion of our association, the opportunity to receive early care and education and the highest level of care available in our college campuses is truly beneficial to these children. And I'm-
Okay.
I hope so.
One more statement, no.
A lot of people here, so we want to hear from-
Okay, everyone-
Remember this, please. 80% of recipients in the state of California are children. Children. Not me, not my students, but children. By putting us into a categorical flexibility fund, we risk our districts and our colleges not supporting our program. The biggest risk, of course, is the state MOE money of $27 million as well as the $8 million in TANF. We strongly oppose categorical flexibility for Cal Works. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can you submit your comment for the record?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. And please, we have a lot of people, so I'm going to try to give other perspectives a chance. So Melva Alvarez Mesa.
I will. We actually already have a letter. This is Melva from Math, Engineering, Science Achievement at Pasadena City College, the Director and the California Association of Mesa Directors is already writing a letter statement going to you guys, so I don't have to read that. I did have a suggestion that has to do with our students being considered as part of your student support services. We need to put more of our students to work. And if we can consider them as maybe being trained to be mentors or peer tutors and employ them on our campus, that's also going to give them student experience as on-job. That would be wonderful. PCC has several programs that we're running currently that are exactly doing that. Specifically, that goes because of the fact that Mesa students are not your typical student. They are a very high-potential student when it comes to math. We are 10 math levels sometimes below transfer. That's 10 levels below transfer. And so a lot of our students are exited out of financial aid because they go over the unit amount, and we need more jobs to be able to support them at the most critical point of transfer, which is when we're dropping the ball. So if you could please consider that in your recommendations. There, our students are extremely, I mean, the people to go to for these under-prepared students that are coming in so that they can mentor them. And I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melva. Very good suggestion. Okay, Christine Terry.
Hi, my name is Christine Terry. I'm the Provost of the School of Continuing Education for the North Orange County Community College District. And I'd like to talk today about the California Master Plan for Higher Education, which over 40 years ago recognized that access to lifelong education was critical to the health and vitality of this state. And now, more than 40 years later, the need for access for lifelong learning has increased, not decreased, as technological advances have increased productive lifespans and consequently increased the need for updated skills training to remain independent or and/or in the workforce much later into life. During this time of declining resources for students, the task force recommendations would eliminate funding for classes for older adults, for parents, for citizenship courses, and also for courses for students with disabilities. This would be the impact of eliminating funding for non-CDCP courses. In the School of Continuing Education alone, 14,926 students would have been denied classes last academic year. At the same time, it's noted that in the task force report, that the K-12 school districts statewide, given the flexibility option, have transferred more than $400 million out of adult education programs. As a result, many districts have closed adult education programs and are referring students to community college programs. Most of the students being referred lack high school diplomas and have significant basic skills remediation needs. Non-credit college programs are impacted and have no resources to build capacity to meet this need. It seems to me that such a significant reduction in the scope of services to students merits a comprehensive review and the full attention of post-secondary educators across the state. I would encourage you to retain the vision of the Master Plan for Higher Education. I would encourage you to fund non-credit education at the community colleges. Non-credit programs have long been the gateway to credit institutions with articulation agreements and transition pathways. A local statistic that we have notes that students who begin in non-credit and move to the credit institutions have a higher success rate. And lastly, I would ask you to incentivize college districts to develop non-credit basic skills programs. Non-credit education has the fiscal incentive in terms of positive attendance and the flexibility to be responsive to the needs of basic skills students who are challenged by work schedules and family responsibilities. In addition, non-credit FTES are reimbursed at approximately 60% of the rate of credit FTES and thus represent a savings to the state. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I'm going to reiterate, if you have your comments, submit them, please. We are going to review all the comments, because it's not as effective to read a long document in this kind of a setting. We want to hear as many questions and perspectives as possible. So I really urge you to submit your comments, summarize it. Okay. We have Lino Thomason.
I'm going to talk fast, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right. My name is Lynn Thomason, and I am here representing the Department of Public Social Services in Los Angeles County. We would like to strongly recommend against the 8.1 consolidation of the categorical funding in Cal Works. I'll kind of briefly summarize this for you. We have a great relationship, I work with the GAIN program, with the Cal Works in 21 of the schools. They do a lot of things as our partners, tracking of the participants and meeting the hours for welfare participation rate, and also in meeting our educational goals. They are well-trained in helping our participants in meeting their educational goals, training programs, and career opportunities. They ensure the expeditions return of necessary education and training verification for Cal Works. We partner with them for job fairs and recruitments. Some colleges even go as far as to get classes for participants, because they know the time limits, that the classes are closed. They make sure services are not duplicated. They are always in attendance at our quarterly GRET, GAIN, Regional Education, and Training Meeting. It is important to both of us to continue to improve services. It has actually become like a reunion to us every three months because we have been working together for so long. With their help, LA County exceeded the 50% welfare participation required by the federal in fiscal 2009, the last published date. I've just got one second left. In fiscal year 2010, 2011, the Cal Works program served approximately 8,000 Cal Works families. In 2010, students were randomly surveyed, and they responded, they're very satisfied with the Cal Works offices. They acknowledge the Cal Works program services their needs. The students think very highly of the staff. And without the Cal Works staff, many Cal Works participants and county staff will be negatively impacted. Welfare participation rate could suffer, exposing the state and counties to incur penalties for not meeting. And the students would have to make critical decisions concerning their educational plan and challenges of being on cash aid and time limits ever approaching. We hope that we can continue this partnership through the existing Cal Works program if they went away, that would be sorely missed. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm going through the questions right now and trying to pick out the ones that haven't had a chance to speak yet. Okay? So, and I'm going to be a lot tougher. We have only 40 more minutes, and I'd like to get the others in. Okay. Will Bruce, President of CCEOPS A?
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm not going to mention Cal Works, just that we support them out of the flex, and we're glad to hear that.
But-
It is the mission of the California Community College EOPS Association to encourage enrollment, retention, and transfer of students of handicap, language, social, economic, and education disadvantage to facilitate the successful completion of their goals and objectives in the college. And we thank the Student Success Task Force for moving EOPS out of the flex, but let's go one step further. While we find it was the vision of- While we find it was the vision of Senator Alquest, who pioneered Senate Bill 164 in nineteen sixty-nine, the roots originated from the civil rights movement of that decade, a vision of social justice coupled with student success. That is what we do. We are EOPS. While we find some of the recommendations favorable to the EOPS mission intent as prescribed by the Senate Bill 164, we have great concerns with proposed recommendations. We oppose any proposal that challenges the foundation of providing access to higher education to those with greatest need. Eight-point-one consolidation of categorical programs. No flexibility for EOPS, even though we moved out of the flexible language. We want to keep that out there because it's just a recommendation. EOPS, no block grant categorical funding. Let's call it what it is. It's block grant funding. Flexibility severs the categorical intent or the legislative intent defined by our statutes. Three-point-one priority registration. No, it's not.
Yeah, no, you need to really...
Okay. There's just two points, two points here.
You need to keep it...
Okay. Occur a hundred units, not counting basic skills. We are concerned with the proposal...
Can you submit your comment?
I will.
Because I think that would be the best way, because right now I don't know that we're even capturing all that you're saying. But you have made it clear that EOPS, and I would submit your comments for the record.
Well, we also want to mention three-point-two, the BOG fee waiver to meet various conditions. Sixty percent of our students are entering colleges with undecided majors to penalize incoming students, require students... We are propose... We want the nine-hundred-to-one counselor ratio, and this needs to happen in order for us to succeed.
Okay, thank you very much, Bruce. Okay. We do have some questions from some of the folks who are watching on the webcast.
And the sound just... Sound was not open, but now they finally have sound. Just one conclusion. The end result of taking all these recommendations added together is to slam the door shut on this open-door policy in the faces of the low-income, education-disempowered students who stand to gain the most benefit for community college education for themselves, their families, and for the economy of California. Okay?
Thank you. Okay. Here's a question from someone watching via webcast. It's a person in San Diego and is urging the task force to reconsider cuts to non-credit, non-CDSP programs like the Acquired Brain Injury Program. Would someone from the task force like to respond to that and/or just take it under consideration?
I think that's a very specific question that I can't imagine that... You know, I would assume that's a Department of Rehabilitation and Community College collaborative program, and, you know, it's so specific, I think we'd have to look into that, Marlene.
Okay.
I don't feel qualified to answer.
So we have that noted. Let's take another question from one of our webcast viewers. This is Brian from San Diego City College, and he believes the recommendation to increase the authority of the chancellor's office seems fiscally dangerous. Is this wise?
Maybe I'll make one statement like that.
Yeah, please, David.
So, one thing, I've heard various people ask this question about this particular recommendation, and one thing I would just like to say is about some of the deliberation that I think went into this is the California Community College system, most of you know, does not have a very strong standing in state government, in our constitution, and in the way state government functions. Maybe you don't, but the chancellor does not select his top staff. The chancellor's office is largely an artifact of the governor's office and has to serve at the governor's pleasure to a great degree. While the CSU and UC are substantially independent, the UC, many of you know, is constitutionally independent. Our ability, a lot of times, to work with you and all of us together to advocate for the community college system is weakened by the lack of strength of the system itself within the standing of state government and politics in California. And so, one of the things that was underlying here is the thought that we need to really build the system in its own ability to advocate for itself and to demonstrate its ability to really deliver and have the capacity to make that happen in terms of state politics and state government. And that, we didn't really articulate it in that way. It's not, that's not really good politic for us to put a lot of that language in a written document of this sort. But I think there, people are assuming that what we're trying to do is move power away from local colleges to the chancellor's office. It actually is a way to try to move more substantial influence from all the rest of the state sort of artifact to the community college system. So I just want to add that a point of clarification has come up in other meetings.
Let me just interject something very quickly, and I agree with Dan completely on his view there. But on the categoricals, there's not really been any discussion within the task force to eliminate any programs. What some members have sought to do is try to get some relief in terms of the regulations. Now, there are those of us that... Also, there's other members on the task force that feel strongly that maybe it is a slippery slope and it does lead to maybe some demise of some of the programs. But let me assure you that when we reconvene, we'll be talking about this so that we can clarify much better what it is that the intent is. And it certainly hasn't been discussed that any of these programs be eliminated, but that simply there be some regulatory relief. So for some of us, it means something. For other of us, it means something different. So we'll just need to have a further discussion on that to try to get some further clarification on it.
Okay. Now, there are several of you who've actually listed specific questions. So I'm going to call your name, and I'm going to read your questions so we can get through as many as possible. That should help facilitate. So this is a question from John Freitas from Los Angeles City College Academic Senate. How does the task force envision reconciling a student's general education course requirements with the recommendation of alignment of course offerings to student need? In other words, how can colleges reasonably plan general ed offerings based on and entering students' ed plan?
John, wherever you are out there, I think that...
Where are you?
The assumption is that there'll be a degree of history about what the demand has been in certain categories. It's not as though that process will start every enrollment period and will be built on that. But it'll be refined as we look at what student demands might be, but it will be built from past experience and with, I think, greater flexibility.
And also, John, with the greater usage of technology, we'll be able to develop those degree audit-type programs, and we'll be able to anticipate what the course offerings are going to be needed based on students' stated preference. Now, obviously, not every student's going to get it right that first freshman, you know, term. There'll be some of those, but a lot of students will. And it's just one of those that we're going to have to start somewhere. But that's a very good question and one that we'll take back to the task force. Okay. Diana Spats with Lifetime Spats, okay. Student parents are now twenty-five percent of all undergraduate students, and half of them are single parents. What has the task force recommended that will address their needs, i.e. childcare, and help them succeed?
Could you read that again?
Okay. Student parents are now twenty-five percent of all undergraduate students, and half of them are single parents. What has the task force recommended that will address their needs, i.e. childcare and to help them succeed?
At this point, there is, obviously, there's nothing in the report that speaks to the issue of childcare. I think the most important thing that's in the report are practices that will help to support single parents and others to get through, to get the vocational and technical degrees and certificates or transfer, if that is the objective. It's a larger perspective. It's a perspective on academic performance, academic achievement. We realize there are negotiations and lobbying going on all the time for funding in various categories. But in this one, our focus is on academic achievement, academic success, and we realize the demands that exist upon parents and single parents in particular, and certainly, there is nothing in the report that is intended to diminish support in any, from any program that we have.
I'll give you some details. That's very good.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Ideas that you've actually got in the chat at this stage.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the things that is envisioned by having the system operate with a stronger chancellor and a, if you will, a greater collaboration among the colleges within the system. That that kind of sharing that you refer to in terms of what is happening at San Francisco City College can be something that is obviously and routinely shared within that system. And I think that stronger chancellor's office can do a much better job of that, and I think the individual colleges will thrive as a result of that dynamic of sharing.
Let me also urge you to go online to the Student Success Task Force website, and there you can, there's a communications thread blog that you can post all your comments and give us your particular insights in more detail, and we're looking at that very carefully. Okay, our next question comes from Leslie Kawaguchi from Santa Monica College. Since CTE courses or programs are tied to local communities, if centralization of course offerings occur, how can local colleges respond in a timely fashion?
Well, I don't think there's anything in the recommendations that's suggesting centralizing course offerings. That was never the intent. If anything, it was meant, I think, to further strengthen the ability of each individual college to shape the course needs around their student plans and their students, which was part of a question earlier.
It does, however, in all fairness, it puts a priority on those programs that are certificate, associate degree, and transfer. And it indicates that this is the central role of the California community colleges and that there are limits. Rationing is occurring already. We need to do it in a way that looks at the most significant part of the missions that we have and make sure that that is supported. And so, to an extent, that may be, that realignment will be determined at the local campus level, but there is that expectation.
Okay, thank you. The next question comes from Sylvia Turner, Dean of the Fine Arts and Performing Arts Division at Santa Ana College. And her question is, academic administrators and some faculty are concerned about the choice to not address the significant impact and needs of career technical education within the community college system. Is it timely or appropriate to forward the report without more recommendations concerning CTE programs?
I think it's appropriate to forward the report as we have it. It's not intended, once again, to be a report that deals comprehensively with every facet of our colleges. There was a comment earlier about, you know, parents and what programs, special programs might exist for them and other particular need areas. So, again, our focus is on student achievement. I don't think there's anything in there that takes away from the concern that you addressed.
But I think if that individual or any of you have more recommendations on CTE, we would certainly want you to send them to us as we are finalizing. And I'll just reinforce, I think, something that we thought was germane to everything we said here, is student plans being a critical driver of all this. As student plans come forth and articulate individual students' needs for CTE courses, I think that pulls for the question that was just asked in terms of driving, making that a driver. One other thing I, we didn't really say when we went through the slides, but I just want to use that as sort of, we talk about student plans as a way to let you know one thing that was underneath our thinking, which was something that some of you saw came from the Commission on the Future, which was sort of this acknowledgement that students don't do optional. And I don't know if some of you saw that sort of underlying premise, but this sort of the idea that when we give students all these options, what oftentimes happens is they do things that are not helpful to themselves, basically. And so, a lot of these are meant to help students help themselves, and then you or we would respond to that. And so, I think that's an underlying thing that's sort of important to know that went into a lot of our thinking.
Okay. The next question comes from Carl Friedlander, Community College Council, CFT. Does a common centralized and diagnostic assessment mean a uniform instrument only, or does it mean uniform cut scores or score cutoffs for all districts as well? I can try to address...
We've not spent any time on cut scores to the extent that we've come to agreement on them. However, the idea of having some common assessment instrument across the state is something that the task force believes would be in the best interest of students in general, also would provide some basis of consistency as we look at data across the state. We need to be able to speak with one voice at certain times and speak with many voices at other times. And this is probably one of those areas where, to a great extent, we need to speak with one voice.
No, I think you've covered that. Okay. The next question is from Josh Miller, Los Angeles Valley College. Has the task force considered how the elimination of repeatable units might undermine the effectiveness of programs like athletics, forensics, journalism, et cetera? Now, I will add that the repeatability issue was not directly tackled in the task force. That was actually addressed through the Board of Governors' action. But I think the task force has concurred with that direction.
Yeah, it's an issue. I think that we have to look at those programs that depend upon, quote, repeatability, if you will. But for repeatability to be present throughout the curriculum and have it be, have the system subjected to, I think, legitimate criticisms based on open-ended repeatability is a problem. And that problem has to be addressed, and the task force attempted to do so. I think if you can provide specific alternatives that might address the issues pertaining to athletics, and that could be helpful. But I think, as you know, as we all know, there are a number of people who will enroll for the same physical education costs that have nothing to do with athletics, but they appreciate having the college available in lieu of having to pay for a sports facility or anything else. And frankly, that's wonderful, but in a world where we're rationing, something's got to give. And I think that's going to be something that is addressed through the repeatability issue.
Okay. Our next question comes from Jasmine Delgado, a Santa Monica College student. And her question is, where are student representatives on the Student Success Task Force, considering the fact that students themselves will be the most affected by all of the draft recommendations?
I just like this, yeah. I appreciate your support for the question, and it's a tremendously legitimate support. And I would want you to feel confident that you have had, you who represent the student interests, have had, I think, wonderful representation on the task force since it was formed. We've had student leaders at every meeting. They're integral members of the task force and have done a very, very good job of representing students. Oh, on the panel today? Well, yeah. Yeah. We, the way, the way we are trying, these meetings are going on up and down the state. There will be some meetings where the panel is predominantly students. The ability for members of the panel to be present is the primary driver of why a student would be here or would not be here. So there's nothing, obviously, that was intended to eliminate students, but they can't be at every meeting, and they will be at a number of meetings, and they've done a great job on the task force.
If you would like to hear a student representative, last week when Senator Carol Lou had her hearing, one of our two representatives was very evident and present there. She was one of the four panelists that participated in that hearing. So you may want to go to that and take a look at it. You'll see her making her comments from a student perspective.
Okay, thank you. Now, I just want to reiterate, your points well taken, and we will, you know, encourage the students. I mean, it is a weekday and they're at school, but we will do everything we can to ensure they're present at the various discussions. Okay. The next question is from Linda Tong, a Student Senate for the California Community Colleges' Region Seven Vice President. And the question is, if you cap the units at a hundred and ten, what will happen to those who need to come back to retrain during harsh economic times and unemployment?
It's a very good question. Our assumption will be that there will always be some local campus capability to assess the special case and a decision to be made on a special case where the number of units goes beyond a hundred and ten. The idea... The idea here is that the community colleges to just, to be available in an ongoing way for individuals to take courses will be present to the extent of resources, but the primary emphasis will be placed on the students going after new enrolled students.
And let me add to that. One of the, this task force gave a lot of thought to trying to design policies that apply to the majority of situations as opposed to designing a policy that can address every exception and that instead the campuses should have the latitude to deal with the exceptions. But the policy should deal with the bulk of the need. Okay, the next question comes from Chris Wells from Al Camino College, Area 8. Area 8 does not support performance funding at this time. Does that mean it will in the future?
I think that, you know, the system will always be open to considering where a particular initiative might help to develop excellence within the system. I think that the, that the task force, you should know, did a rather in-depth review of what's occurring in states such as Ohio and the state of Washington. We spent a lot of time looking at performance-based funding. There was vigorous debate within the task force, and the recommendation to not move in that direction right now is the recommendation. To say that's going to be a condition that exists well into the future, I would never say that. And I would hope that all of us would be open to look, looking at what might benefit the system, even something that is a little far into us such as performance-based funding.
There are some strong feelings about performance-based funding, and there are people that have come up with some very specific proposals regarding performance-based funding. Again, as Peter mentioned, we, as a task force, are not recommending that, but the discussion will come back up.
One thing I think I might just clarify, too, I can only imagine what's underneath that question. But I think it's important to just acknowledge the facts. So, we gave you a timeline. This task force was commissioned to do some work, make its recommendations, and then the task force's work is completed. So, based on where we sit here today, you just saw the schedule. We'll be done with our work in the coming months. So, I don't, so see it as it is. Don't read into some grand conspiracy that this task force is going to sit around for the next 500 years and has all these other agendas to undertake. Other people would have to make a decision for that to happen, but-
That's right.
We're serving at the pleasure of the Chancellor and the Board of Governors, and that's the position that we put forward.
Just to follow up on Mr. Ratray's comment, I believe there would be zero probability that the recommendation that, as it presently stands, will be changed in the final report. I shouldn't say zero, but close to zero. So, I think that the recommendation of no action on performance-based funding at this time will be the recommendation that is part of the report.
And my comment was just simply that it'll be discussed later by others, as suggested here.
Okay. Let's move through these questions. We have about 15 minutes left. Vernon Bridges, Los Angeles Valley College. If categorical funding is consolidated, how will accountability in regards to the purpose of your recommendations be measured for our campuses? In other words, I, how do we know where the funding's going if, in fact, there's consolidation? Is that- Right. And what will be the accountability for how those funds are being directed?
My assumption would be that, given the three categories of student support, faculty support, and I think vocational or staff development, the, each one of those areas, obviously, will have reports and be accountable within those various categories. So, that's how it would be framed, and each campus would conduct that. And then there would be, that would be assessed against what is occurring at other institutions.
You know, again, as I mentioned earlier, when we reconvene, we'll need to take a very, a closer look at what the intent here is. And the one that we've been hearing is regulatory relief. And as I mentioned, it means something to some of us and something different to other of us. So, we will need to clarify exactly what it is because in there lies the, maybe, if nothing else, at least a clarification to the issue.
Okay. All right. Next question from William Garcia, Associate Dean of Student Services, College of the Sequoias. Why was the OPS not referenced as a program that has been successful statewide? What is the real intent of block grants or flexibility?
The intent of, let me see if I can just summarize this very briefly. Number one, I want to reiterate what was stated earlier. There is nothing in the report that recommends in any way for cutting the funding to categorical programs. Zero. Number two is the reality is that there's been a tremendous growth in specialized programs. Twenty-one now that exist within our colleges. The second reality is that there has been substantial decrease in funding for those programs. Substantial. So, it raises the question, is there a way of accomplishing as much as we possibly can in these areas that might better serve the colleges? And one alternative is to have available the ability, not the demand, but the option of individual colleges where the case can be made and made strongly to consider how the resources from those specialized programs can be coordinated and can work to achieve the ends that the programs have. So, the reality is that the cuts are occurring, and it does raise the question, is there a better way of doing it as a result of that?
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to the next question from Andrew Hanson, Student Trustee, Rancho Santiago, Community College District. I have students who will ask me why they are pushed aside for degree and certificate seekers and why their need to learn a new skill or improve their education in some way without following a degree path is not considered success.
It's a good question. I, it's a great question. I think in a world where resources were somewhat unbridled, the ability to educate people for life, the ability for them to participate fully in education without accountability might be a wonderful thing for a society to have. That, however, is not the reality that we are in. The reality is, resources are limited. How do you utilize those resources to provide the greatest benefits for individuals and for the state of California that is providing the dollars for that to happen? And what that means is, there has to be priorities, there has to be a focusing, and there has to be support for what those priorities might be. And the task force has come down consistent, for the most part, with the master plan for higher education as to what those priorities are.
Maybe I misunderstood the question a little bit, but the position, I think, of the task force is, everyone should have a plan. And if that means that maybe it's a plan for one or two courses and nevertheless is something that needs to be there, how the colleges do that, of course, is going to be the trick. But, you know, as Peter indicated here, can't possibly serve all with limited resources.
Yeah. A comment was made earlier about the Mesa Program and about the focus. One of the things we found out in the testimony that was provided from individuals from other institutions and those with a research background, that if there was a single variable that perhaps had as much of an impact on student success as anything, it was the development of an educational plan by the student enrolling into, in the institution. And a part of that educational plan was the development of a goal. Not a specific goal. I'm going to be a biological science major or so forth. But I'm going for an associate degree, I'm going for transfer, et cetera. But that variable of having an educational plan with a goal probably influences student success as much as any single thing, at least that I recall coming up with.
Okay. So, I have my next question from Shayla Seivert from Pelhamore College. Regarding aligning course offerings to student needs, how do you envision carrying this out? Currently, our scheduling is done well in advance of students' application and assessment.
That's very similar to the previous question, I believe, that gentleman named John made. And obviously, you're absolutely correct that the planning sequence is so far in advance. You have to be guided by what past demand has been, have that influence to a great, great degree, continue, as Manuel indicated, collecting data about student goals, student educational programs, using those to, if you will, massage the schedule annually, not just, you know, repeat from year to year the same schedule, but to try to be as responsive as possible to the goal statements that the students make.
Okay. Here's a question from Barbara Dins- Okay, I can't read the writing. President of the Board of Trustees of North Orange County Community College District. Okay, she has several, but I think, let's see. What is the timeline for implementation? How will equity be protected? And how will these recommendations be enforced?
Good questions. Excellent questions. I think that the timeline, first I'd say, one of the good things about the report, if you have looked at it, it begins to immediately identify actions that have to be taken to move the recommendation forward. Many, many reports yield good recommendations, but they have no plan of moving ahead on those recommendations. One of the things that the task force felt very strongly about is implementation and moving toward implementation may be as important as the recommendations that are being made. So, the timeline is going to vary. Some of the things will be moved immediately. You get some sense of that from looking at the follow-up actions under the individual recommendations. Others will take collaboration and planning and working with the individuals who have primary responsibility for those programs and looking how we can move ahead. As far as the equity issue is concerned, I think that the primary mechanism that will be used to assess will be our feedback through the rather exceptional information system that the California community colleges have. And if we see diminutions in enrollment patterns, that will automatically present a red flag and ensure that some very strong action will be necessary. And what was the last, oh, the enforcement? I think the enforcement, if that's a term that one wishes to use, there are some recommendations where the funding will be dependent upon, for a particular category, will be dependent upon adoption of that methodology. For example, I think in the utilization of the assessment instrument, there'll be funds available to support that, and if the college adopts it, fine, if they don't. So, that, but it'll be primarily through the Chancellor's office.
Let me add something on the equity issue. If in seven, eight years, whenever it is that we look back at this, and it is the interest of the task force to increase achievement levels for all students, but if we look back and we find out that we've achieved those on a percentage basis, we actually have become better, but we became better because we eliminated hundreds of thousands of students who are below college level and have not done anything with that, then we've been a failure. So, we can't wait for seven or eight years to look at that. We need to look at that quickly and immediately. And as we're finalizing these things, and actually throughout the year, this past several months, I've been very much concerned with access. We recognize that access is an issue because of the things that we've been talking about. But again, if that, if the recommendations and the implementations of those recommendations knock out a whole group of people simply because they are the most challenging of students, then again, we've not done our job.
As the comment was made by the College Opportunity Program, access without success is somewhat of a hollow promise, and it may do some harm. So, what we want is no diminution of the access. If anything, to encourage and support that to a greater extent. But we want to have, concomitant with that, access the success of students across the board. And that's the intent of these recommendations.
Okay. We're going to take one more question, and we really did our best to get a broad perspective and an array of issues included in the questions. We have all of your questions, and we're reading them, and we're going to be noting them and documenting them. So, if your question didn't get asked, it's still being documented. And then- Well, we did, yeah.
Well-
Okay. Right. Mm-hmm. Right. Well, what I will say, for the first hour, we did take comment. And obviously, if we'd spent the whole time taking comment, we'd never get to the questions. So, we tried to balance, and what I would say is, we have your questions documented. You know, we have a commitment to be done at noon, and we have your questions, and we have many mechanisms for communication. We are going to have other town hall meetings in Southern California. Right. Okay. Well, we have other task force meetings scheduled, and we will definitely take into account more time for comment.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, this is our first town hall.
That will be very much a local decision within the general guidelines of placing a priority on certificate, degree, and transfer- of placing a priority on certificate, degree, and transfer-based programs and basic skills, of course. And then that determination will be made within the campus of how that is done.
So can I suggest this? I mean, obviously, I can feel the angst, we can all feel the angst. We were trying to organize, I think all of us, a respectful, thoughtful process. But we can hear loud and clear, it would have been great to have this be longer. It would have been great to have multiple meetings. We're all trying to do this in the right way. So that, if nothing else, is a tremendous takeaway for us. We'll make the band, we'll make the pipeline wider. We have to do that, and we're trying to do it. We're all dealing with our own challenge schedules as well. But we know the import of the issue. There's nobody here that's taking this lightly. So why don't we say that our biggest promise to you is that we're going to come back to you with a bigger pipeline for the input? Okay, all right, duly noted. So can we...
So, thank you very much. So we hear you loud and clear, and this is why we're here. We have the room for another 20 minutes, half hour. Let's try and, let's try and get some more brief comments in. And we also heard that when we, this is our first town hall meeting. We have several more to come. We've also heard that this is a valuable process, and we will give more time in the future. We will try to work with that schedule. But let's try to give others a chance to speak who haven't had a chance. I did say I had one more question, and I think it was the president from LA. Let me go ahead and go with this question. And then let's just try to find a way, and we'll just be respectful of each other. Because every single one of you has a valuable voice and perspective. So we want to honor that, but we do have some constraints. And we especially want you to know that you coming here is critically important, and we do honor that. And I apologize that we don't have enough time today, but the process is not over. This is the very beginning of the process. So we have a question from David. Is this you? Okay.
From me already. The question's about centralization. So David, you were with us on Friday, and we talked about decentralization, centralization in LA. We are highly decentralized. And I just have the opinion, after two reads of the recommendations, that this does centralize in significant ways on a state basis. And I'm not saying I'm necessarily opposed to that, but it strikes me as something that needs to be defended. There are 112 colleges. Why would we want to compel all 112 to do certain things as opposed to giving districts an option? As opposed to changing Title V, so districts, if they want to, can require a mandatory orientation? That's something we've wanted to do in LA for a long time. But why would we want to require essentially all colleges to do anything, let's say? And I know you might say, well, it's not required, but if the funding, accessing extra funding is contingent on following certain steps, as it does say, it seems to be de facto required. So what's the argument for centralizing? Or do you dispute that it really is a centralizing, there is a centralizing tendency?
David, I'll make initial response to you. I think where the centralization occurs to the extent that it does, it's on the, if you will, the big issues of mission, the issue of assessment and areas such as that, where there is, where there is seen a need to have a statewide ability to communicate what our primary roles are. Transfer, associate degree, technical education, et cetera. And then within those categories, colleges might emphasize, for example, like trade tech, one thing over another. But I think it's on the big issues where centralization comes in, where there can be perhaps tremendous cost savings, such as in technology and the ability of a campus to become part of that and enabling the system to operate more effectively with it. But I think what would be helpful to us is if, and if you could identify where the centralization tones in there are truly detrimental to effectiveness. That would be very helpful. As opposed to a generalization, there can't be centralization or whatever. But where you see it as being detrimental to effectiveness on the local campus, I think that would help all of us.
The other thing I'll just add, I kind of said already, but I'll just clarify a little bit more. The chancellor's office can serve as a very important supporting organization to the system. But for the chancellor's office to be effective in doing that, it has to have some degree of sort of control of its own enterprise. Selecting, recruiting, and assigning people and appointing top staff and those sort of things. And a lot of that in state government politics, this is inside the Beltway, is undermined by the way that that office is organized in California. So part of it is actually meant to make the office of the chancellor better able to do its own duties and functions, a lot of which are supportive functions to help colleges, not directive functions. So I think that's probably one of the nuances, David, that we didn't maybe state very well. But it was certainly intended. And again, I think as Peter said, if you can give us some suggestions too, where the law of unintended consequences might do something we don't want. Because that wasn't the intention there.
Let me see if I can add something very quickly here. Whoever pays the bill ends up being the one that starts pulling the chain. Now, many years ago, we were actually funded at the local level. Increasingly, as you all know, we've been funded at the state level. There's a lot of pressure by those individuals who are responsible for state funding to have the community colleges respond to issues, those large issues that David is talking about. And so, you know, we're under that kind of a pressure. There are some things, as Peter mentioned, that we need to speak in one voice and, you know, maybe quite a bit in which we all are driven by our local interest. We're going to continue to face some challenges. And this issue of centralizing the chancellor's office or strengthening it is a very important one for all of us. Because the political dynamics being the way they are, we are competing with others who are looking to grab that money. And if we don't have a strong chancellor's office in Sacramento, I think the entire system is weakened, we're weakened as a whole and we're weakened individually. So the need to strengthen it to some degree is very important.
Okay. All right, we have, if you haven't had a chance to speak and you have a question in here, do you want to raise your hand? And I'm going to, you know, remember, this is, we're sharing the time with our colleagues, and we have about 15 more minutes, so we'll just call on you. Go ahead. And please try to be brief.
My name is Alejandra. I'm a student worker at the financial aid office at East Los Angeles College and also a student. My question is that throughout the speech, you keep talking about reality. Well, what about the student reality? With categorical funding, how can you be sure that critical programs such as financial aid will be, will get the funding needed in order to help students succeed?
Well, I think as fully as we can, we will certainly work at the state level to retain those programs that exist, making as strong a case as possible of what the value is that is derived from these programs to the state of California. And certainly in terms of federal financial aid. I mean, all of us believe fully in those programs and do not want to see them diminished in any way. So we'll do whatever we can on the lobbying front to retain them.
Let's take the question over there on the far end.
Thank you. My name is Sunazal. I'm faculty member at Mount San Antonio College in the Learning Assistance Center. I teach writing, three levels below transfer. Okay, thank you. In our department, we're extremely concerned about the recommendation's extremely narrow definition of success. The college board's report from 2005 shows that there is nearly no difference between some college and completing a certificate or an AA on the graduate's level of income. So we believe that there needs to be a closer look at how you are defining success. It needs to be broadened to include more students. The draft recommendations of the task force, we feel, would change the mission of the community colleges, negatively impact underprepared students, disproportionately impact students of color, impose student control over faculty development, create a generic assessment that drives the creation of courses, and wrest local control away from California community colleges. We believe that the way to effect positive, meaningful, lasting change in education is not from the top down, but rather from the bottom up through teacher-guided research, professional development, and sharing of best practices. Positive, meaningful, lasting change in education must include all of us, teachers, staff, students, in an ongoing conversation that lasts longer than an hour and longer than a month. The conversation is not yet finished. So my question is, how can the task force open up the conversation to include those of us at the center of our community colleges, students, staff, and teachers? And also, how can the task force work toward refocusing the recommendations toward a more inclusive vision of success?
Thank you. Can you submit your comments? Can you submit your comments? Thank you. Okay. Paula, you got a question or comment?
Yes, Paula Munoz Ventura College. I don't have questions, I have comments. I'll just read the bullets, since everybody seems to be such a hurry. Do not deny registration priority to students in academic or progress probation. Do not limit registration priority to students with less than 100 units. Do not limit access to Board of Governor fee waivers for any low-income student who is eligible to enroll in credit courses. Do not limit access to Board of Governor fee waivers to students with more than 110 units. Do not limit access to Board of Governor fee waivers to students in academic or progress probation. Do not restrict basic skills instruction to non-credit classes. This was already stated in the August 17 Student Services Task Force version. In conclusion, if these recommendations go into effect, 200,000 students plus would be disenfranchised. This would allow students who have financial resources and not in need of bulk fee waivers to continue in college. The Student Success Task Force claims that there would be an $89 million cost savings system. But this money would save, this money would be saved on the backs of the poor and most vulnerable students. I must comment, I must comment that the foundations mentioned as funders for this project, such as James Irvine Foundation, the Walter Johnson Foundation, the Lumina Foundation, and others, are private foundations. It appears that they are perhaps interested in funding a plan to privatize or change our public community college system and therefore alter our California master plan. The Student Success Task Force are very wrong on so many levels. It seems that the Student Task Force is intent on denying access to these new majority ethnic groups, which are the fastest-growing demographic in California community colleges. So I will ask you a question. Do you think that these recommendations might be classist or racist?
I guess one could argue that it might be racist not to do something. Because we are in a situation where we have a great deal to do in terms of improving our success rate. So what we do, as I mentioned earlier, is very dependent on continuing to have access to students. But there is a great interest in making sure that the students that we are working with, whether they're the non-traditional and high-risk students or the most successful students, are getting as complete an education as they can and that they are being held accountable for their own education to a degree. And that we are holding colleges accountable for providing that access and the continued ability for the colleges to be able to develop those, whether it's basic skills or whether it's training in career tech areas, whatever it is to the extent that we can. So I'd argue that, you know, the task force has been trying to work in as best a possible way to ensure that access is still available, but that we are as accountable as we can be to those very same students that we're very much concerned with.
I also was a DV, domestic violence victim. My name is Sarah Zaragoza. I'm 20 years old. I have a three-year-old, and I'm a single mother. And I just wanted to say really quickly that I enrolled in Cerritos College in fall 2009. That was my first success. I took a math class, three levels under college-level math, and passed and have now reached the college level. That was also a success. Next year, I will apply to transfer and get my AA as a psychology major, another success. You can't take that money away from students like myself who need services the most. EOPS has given me the tools to succeed, the counseling, the priority registration, the book grants, and so much more. I could not have continued without the help of the bulk fee waiver. Even when I was on probation, academic probation, the current budget cuts have been hard enough for this program, and we need to keep EOPS funds in EOPS, or students like myself will not have a chance to succeed. I'm a success, thank you very much.
Let me just say, to clarify, and you are a success, and you are what this is all about. And EOPS funds are not being affected at all. The EOPS program remains in the categorical. And so I want you to know that we're doing this for students like you. Okay, let's, oh, the gal over there with the red hair? Yeah, she wanted to speak. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'll be real quick. I'm the financial aid director at Harbor College. And just the whole thing of consolidating the categoricals. You're going to make us fight amongst ourselves, and I'd rather spend my time helping students and doing my work. Don't make us fight amongst ourselves. This shouldn't be consolidated.
My name is Haika Kessler-Hyberg. I am from San Diego. With this acquired brain injury program that you heard earlier, now our problem is not with the funding so much, it's with the elimination of entire programs with a single sentence, 4.1, bullet number six, which would eliminate any courses in the non-credit divisions that are non-CDCP, which includes obviously older adults, citizenship parenting, but also all the disabled special classes, of which the acquired brain injury happens to be one of. And we're the people who are serving the vets coming home from the war. We're the people serving doctors, teachers, lawyers, all of whom, and business people, all of whom came up with me, who happened to have gotten into a car accident, aneurysms, strokes. Car accidents don't discriminate, IED blasts don't discriminate. And without the classes that we provide as a stepping stone into the credit realm, they would never go on to do all the great things that they have done. We have had students that have gotten A, AMA, PhDs. We've gotten, had students that gone on to the Paralympics. The lady sitting next to me who had to leave had written a book. And so we want to make sure that these programs all stay. We would respectfully request that you eliminate 4.1, bullet number six, so that actually, that the community colleges could become role models in providing these kinds of services to the community. We have a model with ABI that would serve the veterans, would serve people like Representative Gabrielle Giffords. These are all things that are very much in the news right now. And we also have, as CalWorks does, a lot of community support. And we support other students in the community. We have SDSU interns that go through our program, and so that they are eventually employable. So it all hangs together. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. I did want to clarify that the point you raised particularly about the brain injury, that was something that was unintended, and the task force intends to revisit that. Right, thank you for your... Thank you for your input. Okay, right here in front.
Hi, my name is Morgan Terrier. I'm a student at Allen Hancock College in San Jose, California. I am strongly opposed of the CalWorks funding going into the block grant. The reason why is, five years ago, you would not recognize me. I was addicted to meth. I am four semesters away from receiving an associate's degree in human services. I want to give back to my community. I want to go into social work. I want to work at Allen Hancock College. I want to help those students who are like myself, who are coming out of jail, who are coming into recovery, and they have nowhere to go. Allen Hancock College, the EOPS program, the CARE program, the CalWorks program embraced me. Knowing my history, they embraced me. They treated me like a person. And now I actually work for that program. I'm a peer advisor. They hired me knowing my past. It's amazing. I urge you not to put the CalWorks funding in the block grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am a success. I am also a Bakersfield College EOPS CARE CalWorks student. I have been told many times since 2005, when I fled my home due to domestic violence, no, you can't do it. It doesn't happen, it doesn't work that way. That's not what we do. And best of all, from Career Services Center, who's supposed to help people like me, said, make welfare your life career. You'll earn more money on welfare than if you were to go and get a real job. Okay? I got hired on, I was doing intern service for human services. That's my AA degree. I went to EOPS CARE CalWorks because I knew how important they were to me. I had even one of Bakersfield College's own private counselors tell me that I was wasting my time trying to just get an AA degree, that I needed to go on and get the BA degree, get the master's degree, but don't worry about the certificate, don't worry about the AA degree. At that point, I was not ready to think of an AA degree. I was not at that point to think of the BA degree or the master's degree. So, that takes time, because you've got to work through all this other garbage that's going on, you know, going through the divorce, going through the recovery of the domestic violence, trying to get all that taken care of. And so, when I started, when I had to do my internship, I went to the EOPS. They hired me on. They said, yeah, go ahead and do it. I was doing free internship. Eventually, they went ahead and they hired me onto that program. I was a peer mentor there. And then I did graduate, and as you can see, I graduated with honors. It's something I never thought I would ever do. And now I'm going to Cal State Bakersfield. This is my first quarter over there, and I'm setting my slide. I'm getting that master's degree, not just the BA degree, but that master's degree. I'm also working for the county of Bakersfield, DHS, Department of Human Services, and I run across students all the time, and they're lost, they don't know what to do, because their workers are telling them the same thing, we can't help you. And when you go to Bakersfield College, or you go to any of these other colleges, and you go to these special programs, they are there encouraging you. Famous comedian actor Milton Berle said, if opportunity doesn't knock, go build another door. And that's what all these students are doing. They're building another door.
Thank you.
At the matriculation conference, if I don't say that matriculation was here. My name is Anna Garza. I work for the North Orange County Community College District, and I serve on the board for the CCC MPA, which is the California Community Colleges Statewide Matriculation Professionals Association. We like what you've done. We know it very well. It's what we've been doing, the work we know, for many, many years, since 1986. Every recommendation of the task force is directly or indirectly related to some aspect of matriculation. I had a statement from Aidan Ely that I was supposed to read. I won't do that in the interest of time, but I made lots of copies, so I hope you, you know, can read it, because we are experts, and we know what it takes to roll out orientation, to do diagnostic assessment, to provide ed plans. But we had four concerns. There's a real absence of the mention of instruction in these recommendations. We think that, we're happy that you like student services so much, but we think instruction has the most to do with student success. So, we'd like you to revisit that. There's just a few recommendations on basic skills and professional development, and we think instruction's badly missing out of these recommendations. We also want to point out that all of these services are upfront. A new student in community colleges is very different than in a four-year university-college environment. So, we provide these services upfront before the student enrolls, so that's a lot of resources. I think we're feeling that some kind of workload or impact study needs to be done. We're also very concerned about what you've heard, especially from students, that our students are very academically unprepared sometimes. They work, they may not have career goals, and they may not have had anybody in their family that have gone to school before. So, given all the barriers that they face, they're far less likely to be prepared academically for college or have the developmental career readiness. And yet, we're suggesting that we put into law a penalty on indecision, that by the second or third term, the student will lose their priority registration. So, we just don't think this is going to work. Our students will make choices. They'll make choices to avoid the penalties. And then will we really get the student success outcomes that we're seeking? And finally, we're, of course, very much against the block grant funding. We just don't think that this is a very good idea, mostly because we're already reduced, you know, an 0910 matriculation funding, which serves all students, was dramatically cut by 52%, as you know. So, how will we have the resources to do this? If you put all of these categoricals into the same category, as someone mentioned, they'll be fighting among themselves. So, it just seems that the flexibility to move money around and to not be burdened with compliance reporting appears to be more of an administrative interest than really serving students' services. Thank you.
One more question.
Marlene, while the mic is being passed, I'm going to have to excuse myself. I do have a commitment that I'm going to have to go to, but I'd just like to say to the audience that this has been tremendously gratifying to be with you today. The passion, the sense of deep commitment that exists, and the individual achievements against tremendous odds have just been amplified through this discussion. And it gives me just a tremendous sense of appreciation to have been involved with community colleges so long, and to be involved with this particular task. I can assure you, we may have a different perspective on means, but as far as the ends are concerned, those ends are shared deeply by all of the members of the task force and with all of you. And appreciate getting the input you provided today, and it will be helpful to us as we finalize the report. So, thank you very much.
Okay.
Hello, folks. My name is Nahasi Lee. I'm a student at the Compton Community Educational Center. I'm also a student senate, Region Seven representative to the state student senate. And my question, I was, my concern is that I understand the difference between the vocational side of the educational master plan and the educational side of the master plan. And I just would like to know what considerations have been made in regards to assuring that vocational students are kept in the loop, as opposed to being cut out every time decisions are made on campuses? Decisions are made for educational programs more often than not, and vocational programs are cut. And I think that if students are going to succeed, some students only come on the community college campuses to do vocational exercises and not academic exercises. Thanks.
Well, I mean, I think one thing, though, is the definition of success that somebody has shown some concern for in terms of narrowness, does include certificate completion, and that certainly is meant to help reinforce and support the standing of those students that choose a CTE path.
I want to thank all of you. I know there are many more questions. This will conclude the public portion of the town hall. The town hall, remember, will continue online. It's been set up to get your comments and to record your comments. This has been a very rich discussion, and I really want to thank you for taking the time to join us today.